We can take our seats, please. Okay, welcome to our meeting this evening. We're going to have the invocation by Minister Jason Floyd of Christian Life Church in Rex, Georgia, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Father, in the name of Jesus, we just thank you right now for this evening, this opportunity to come boldly before your throne. Father, we come before you tonight in the power of the Holy Spirit, asking you, Lord, to lead us, guide us, and direct us, to give us your wisdom and your insight and your counsel like only you can. We ask you, Father, to enlighten us tonight, that you would allow peace to reign supreme in this atmosphere. And we just ask you, Lord, to just continue to orchestrate and order the steps of each and every person here, guide and guard even our conversation tonight, so that the words that we speak, the ideas that come forth, will bring glory and honor to you. Finally, Father, we take authority over everything in this place that would try to hinder what you would desire to be accomplished here. And we ask that you would be glorified, that your peace, Father, would come forth in a way that will cause new ideas, concepts, and witty inventions to break forth in this county, so that the lives of the people will be transformed and changed. So, Father, we do honor you tonight, and we praise you again for this opportunity to gather together and strategize on behalf of this county, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Good evening and welcome to the November 1st, 2016 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
I do, Mr. Chair and Board. I'd like to hold the appointment to the Development Authority.
Is there any particular reason why we keep holding it, other than...
Yeah, we're just waiting for the right person.
Do you want a second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Probably move in a second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Here in honor, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with the approved amendment.
I'll second it. Probably move in a second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, unanimous.
Approval of the October 18, 2016 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Regular Business Meeting Minutes from October 18, 2016.
Is there a second?
A second.
Probably move in a second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, unanimous.
The Board will now hear public comment. Mr. Chairman, we do have citizens that have signed up to address the Board. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Henry Anderson, Unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening. As all five of you, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners are aware, you as a collective, unified, five-member commission team have not met my overall high expectations that I have of all five of you, and your governance, leadership, overseeing, oversight, and governing of Clayton County, its department and agencies, and your governance of Clayton County government as a whole. In fact, all five of you are presently operating at a level that is far below my expectations of how a commissioner, a chairman, and elected officials of your caliber should be, and your evaluations, ratings, scores, summaries, commentary, critiques have reflected this. There is, however, one area that you have under the leadership of Chairman Turner completely excelled at, at a level that far exceeds all of my highest expectations of you and Clayton County's governmental agencies, and that has been the strengthening, broadening, and expansion of the Clayton County Access Television Station that is under the leadership of station managers Ms. Lindsay Delonge and Ms. Glanetta Griffin. Not only has this department achieved, excelled, far exceeded, and far surpassed their stated goal and commitment of providing informative, original, and entertaining programming, informing the Clayton County citizens about services that are available in Clayton County, they spotlight individuals and departments that govern Clayton County, and show the great events and activities going on and in around Clayton County that are of interest to the citizens of Clayton County. It is indeed a 24-hours-a-day, seven-days-a-week power-packed station that continues to show all that is good, great, and positive about Clayton County, its citizens, its employees, its governmental agencies, and all five of you when you're out in your communities with your constituents, and it shows the everyday people who make Clayton County great. It is for these reasons that the Clayton County Broadcast and Communications Department and their station managers, Ms. Lindsay Delonge and Ms. Glanetta Griffin, and I must include all five of you, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, have earned my highest evaluation, numerical rating score of a 10+, which means that all of you have far exceeded my highest level of great expectations, and this is the highest honor that I can give and show and bestow on any department or any Clayton County employee who is the very best of the very best of this county. Congratulations to you all for achieving my very highest evaluation rating and score in the area of broadcast and communications with your Clayton County Access Television Station. Good day.
Thank you.
Anthony Williams, Clayton County resident, Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, good evening. I pray all is well with your souls. This evening, I'm just coming to keep you informed of the efforts to create this Concerned Citizens of Clayton County Coalition, because, again, I haven't seen the idea of you coming together to make the appeal to the people to say, "Forgive me for making a egregious error in the contract dispute that we had regarding Mr. Wade Starr." Therefore, we are left with no option, except to continue to press forward till we build this coalition so you will understand what we're expecting of you. That's all this doctor has eluded, high expectation, because we're expecting you to perform as such an excellence. That's all. So, we're moving forward, and we hope that we can perhaps get you to even come to one of the first meetings that we're going to have, which is going to be November, the 12th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Atlanta Bread Company. We're asking all the citizens to join us, because we know if we stand collectively, you will pay attention. Thank you.
Jerry Garber, I believe.
It's Garber.
Garber. Well, you already know my name. Let me tell you why I'm here. I'm here tonight to protest the Permanent Burn Ban Amendment that the Board of Commissioners unanimously approved on October 18, 2016.
I'm sorry. Could you please state your county of residency?
I'm from Rex, Georgia, Mrs. Singleton's district.
Gregory.
Mrs. Gregory, sorry, Mrs. Gregory. This amendment states that residential burning of any type within unincorporated Clayton County is expressly prohibited. I realize you can cook a hot dog or something, but we're talking about leaves and sticks and cleaning of your yard. Anyway, I and my neighbors are here tonight, are opposed to the permanent burn ban. We strongly believe that this amendment should be reversed immediately. I ask that this situation be put on your agenda as soon as possible, so that more information can be put forth by the citizens and their concerns why this should be reversed. Thank you. Thank you very much, folks. And one more thing, how many people are here tonight because of the burn ban?
I am. I am.
All right. Raise your hands, it's good enough. Thank you. Thank you. Jennifer Mastrenardi. Hopefully, I got close. Did I get close?
Could you please restate your name for the record?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Jennifer Mastrenardi. I am in Clayton County. We both reside on Turner Road. This is...
Caroline Adams.
Also from...
On Turner Road.
All right, ma'am, you're the one who signed up, so you'll be the only one speaking.
I was going to ask your permission if there's any possible way that she can speak as well as me. She is signed up. She's number six, Caroline Adams. Or Turner, did I put...I may have put Turner. Okay, so it's Caroline Turner. I apologize. So, if it would be okay, that would be wonderful.
She's going to share your three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, we have...I have purchased almost 40 acres from Ms. Turner, and the property's been in the family for almost 200...
Over 100 years, yeah.
Yeah, almost 200 years. And we, when we purchased the property, we were not under the understanding that it was an ER, zoned ER, which is estate residential, and we thought it was ag. And when I...we're in the conservation, we're within all of the guidelines for being in the conservation. On this 40 acres, we have...part of it is crossed over through power lines, part of it is in the flood zone. Like, there's nothing else you can do with this, other than horses. I have 22 horses. I don't know if you can tell when I walked up, but I am also pregnant, and I don't know what I'm going to do with my 22 horses. So, on this street, there are 14 properties ranging anywhere from five acres to 258 acres, including the Truitt's estate that's there. There are 12 barns within those 14 properties, and three of the properties already have, like, livestock on it. And no one on the street was aware that they were rezoned to ER.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. If you could, please, if you could come a little bit closer to the microphone...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Or pull it down towards you.
I know I'm short. We're both short. But, go ahead.
This land has been in my family for over 100 years. It was the family farm. It's always been agriculture, and we've always had livestock on this property, horses, turkey farm, chicken farm. It's been through it all, farming land. And to my knowledge, we had never had any rezoning done. We had originally owned 140 acres, and we have sold some off. And as we sold, as I said, we sold this to her as an ag, because we weren't aware that it was not agriculture, because, like I said, at the time she bought it, it had horses on it. And she has, like she said, 22 horses. We have horses. I live right next door. The land joins my property. We have horses. We have cows. Truitt Cathy owns the other part of the road that we are attached to. He has livestock, or his family still has livestock on it. He has about eight barns on his property. We have two other neighbors that have barns on their property that has horses. And I don't think any of the neighbors, and we would have gotten some more neighbors up here if we'd have realized all of this, but I don't think anybody, any of our neighbors would be opposed to this becoming a one-person dwelling, or one-family dwelling with ag.
Okay. Your time is up, but what is it that you're asking for the changes of zoning?
I'm asking to see if there can be a change of zoning to ag for this property. For...
Okay, well, I'll ask you, have you gotten with the zoning administrator or spoke to those?
I have. I've spoken to the zoning administrators.
And she's outlined to you the process that you would have to undergo?
She did. She also was stating that she thought that maybe the area in general had been zoned either mistakenly because of all of the large properties within the area, and the livestock, and all of the animals that are already within the entire neighborhood. And I know, once upon a time, she was saying that she had some, a sign put up years and years ago, well over 10 years ago, and they had protested anybody doing any kind of rezoning to ER, and she said that, you know, they thought that everybody in the neighborhood would have realized that, at that point, they were trying to rezone, and no one would allow that, because everybody has horses, and it's a family, you know, it's just...
Okay, well, I'm encouraging you to continue to get with the zoning administrator and also get with your district commissioner, and see if they can work that out. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Looks like Greg Gorin.
Here.
Okay. All right.
Please restate your name for the record and provide your county of residency.
Gregor Haring, Unincorporated Clayton County. And I'm here also for the burn ban that was voted unanimously on and passed on the ordinance amendment, then made it into an ordinance. I do not believe that the general public was made aware that this vote was going to take place, or you would have seen a whole bunch more people here like you have today. Myself, for one, did not even know about it until two days ago. That's why I'm here today. I'm here in hopes that you'll take into consideration to rescind the ordinance and get it back onto another agenda where you can have a fair representation of the people that feel that the burn ban is not really wanted in unincorporated Clayton County. I thank the Board this evening for hearing us out, and hopefully, you'll get it back on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, what's your address?
Hampton, Georgia.
Okay.
Good evening. Appreciate y'all letting me talk here this evening, and I'm going to be one of the other thorns in your side about the burn ban. I've been in Clayton County for 49 years, and 35 of them in the same location on Field of Road, unincorporated Clayton County. I don't do a lot of burning, but I feel like I should at least have the right to take care of whatever debris that I do have. You know, as a citizen, I do what I think is right, as I'm asked to do by the laws. I don't burn during May, all the way up to October. I save my stuff up. I don't want to take it down to the dump and pay a fee to dump it down there. I have a big area that I can burn it in, and I've never had a problem with it before, and I've never had anybody to complain about it, and the fire department's never been to my house. I did post some stuff on social media yesterday and this morning, and I have been contacted by Channel 2, and I told them I didn't want to talk to them right now. I just want to see how we can get things settled among us and keep the rest of the outsiders out. You know, if I need to get a petition with 1,000, 2,000 votes or names on it, if that will help, if you'd let me know now, I will do it by the next meeting. But I feel strong about this.
Okay, bully notice, sir.
I appreciate you letting me speak this evening.
Thank you, sir. Mary Ann Martos.
Guess why I'm here?
Burn ban. All right.
As far as I can find out online, and I live in Rex, Georgia, Clayton County, or unincorporated Clayton County, would be the only county in Georgia with a permanent ban, burn ban. I, too, am not a big burner, but, once a year, I go in, I have, like, 35-gallon drum or whatever, and I have twigs and things, and I burn. And if it's smoky, I don't do it. And if the fire department says, "Don't do it," I don't do it. So, I'm just adding my voice. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Matthews, and I live in Rex, Clayton County, and I'm here tonight, along with all of my neighbors, to protest the burn ban amendment that the Board passed at the last meeting. I think I have two main issues with this. First, there was very little information that was made available to anyone before the meeting. I saw only one notice of an informational meeting that was put out in a weekly e-blast. This was on a Friday, and the meeting was on a Saturday. Now, unfortunately, I was already out of town, so I couldn't attend that meeting. Secondly, I don't understand why the permanent ban applies only to unincorporated Clayton County. I mean, I live in Rex, so I can't burn, but my neighbor in Morrow, they can burn. Now, as an air quality issue, this just doesn't make any sense to me. I understand having a burn ban during the drought that we have, but I don't believe that a permanent ban is a really good solution for responsible people who want to take care of their property. So, respectfully, I would request that the burn ban amendment be rescinded and that this be put on an agenda immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linnell, and I reside in Fulton County, but my business is in Clayton County. And I'm here for the zoning, the zoning ban, if you could please lift it on November 18th. My husband and I have a...my husband and I have an auto repair business, and our next step is to obtain our broker's license, but due to the ban, we're unable to take the next step and grow our business due to the ban. And, of course, the...
What's those people who come by?
Code enforcement come by for the cars that we have for sale in the front. Now, it's not there in a junky manner, so we, you know, maintain, you know, a cleanly business. Our business has been...we had our business for four years in Clayton County, and we were in a well-established pace, so we want to take our business to the next level by obtaining our broker's license, but due to the ban, we're unable to do that, so I was wondering, and obtain a conditional zoning license for that. So, I was wondering if you guys can do something about that as well. Thank you.
So, Linnell.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Jackson. I'm from Fulton County. As my wife said, we're here for about zoning. It would be a great help to us, not only just for us, but for the community. Right now, my wife and I, we have a program that we offer for teenagers like ourselves, young people like ourselves, from 18 up to 28. What we're offering is training, if you need to learn how to work on cars, if you don't have a college background or a GED program, we're putting stuff together, but we need the funds to get this going. We already started out of our pocket. We have about four teenagers that come through our shop on a daily basis just to learn and get some kind of learning idea of how to work. A lot of these kids are in trouble with the law, and these are the ones they're really trying to reach, are the ones who really don't have nothing, no high school background. We even have teachers that's going to come in to offer GED programs, which we will be paying out of our pocket. So, if we get the zoning lifted and get it going, the money we generate from selling cars would also help us to help them. We're in the business not just for us, but for the community. I'm the youth minister for my church, and young people are pretty much on my heart. I'm from Jamaica, so I know what it is not to have a trade, not to have a college degree or education. So, when I came here, I fulfilled all that, but there are kids here that are born here that really need the help, and if my wife and I can put this together, it would be great. We would appreciate it. It's leaving a legacy, not just a memory, and our legacy is to have young people to become whatever they want to become, because this is the United States, and that's why I'm here. So, please, if you can help us, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mickey Garber.
Sir, you're going to have to talk into... I know you're loud and all, but please speak into the mic and don't push it off to the side. Thank you.
You'll get mad, because you'll think I'm hollering at you. I'm here in protest of the burn ban.
I'm sorry. Could you please state your county? County of residency?
Clayton County for 69 years. I attended an informal meeting on Saturday, September 24th, and expressed my concerns about this total ban. There were only about six or seven county residents present. The remainder were fire department officials who I greatly respect. I request that further informational meetings be held so that more people would be aware of this total ban. And I request that the ban, as it stands now, be repealed and set back to the old ban, which was from May to October. I would also like to say that Ms. Gregory and Mr. Commissioner Gregory and Commissioner Edmondson were at that meeting and told me expressly that a more informative meeting would be held before anything would go forward. This didn't happen. Also, calls were made to Commissioner Gregory and Chairman Turner, which calls were not returned. This ends my talk. Do you have any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Garber, I don't remember speaking at that meeting. I just want to clarify that, because I was very sick, and I didn't speak at that meeting, because I remember I was very sick.
Ma'am, you did not. You were...you only listened, and when I got up and spoke, you had an emergency and went out that door.
Right, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have time for one more speaker.
That would be Mr. Orlando Gooden. And those of you who signed up and did not get opportunity to talk, then you would be first on the list at our next scheduled meeting, if you choose to come and speak at that time.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. Clayton County Board of Commissioners subscribe to one philosophy, lack of transparency, quote, "Lack of transparency is a huge political advantage, because the public is stupid." That is a quote from Jonathan Gruber, who designed Obamacare. How's that working out? I was told to lighten up with my criticism of the commissioners, because they will not give you anything you've been advocating for. Well, what have you done? A, the Aquatic Center lockers are still rusty, unsanitary, and unsafe. I guess a half a million-dollar concession stand was a bigger priority. B, Nicole Horn should have been confirmed 5-0 as Director of Parks and Recreation, because she's best qualified for the job. Petty jealousy and insecurity. The commissioners only vote for people who are incompetent, least threatening, and who they can control. C, no additional funding or support for Clayton County Police Department. Are you aware that crime is on the rise? D, your voting pattern still reeks of corruption and collusion. Thank you, Wade Boss Starr. This is so pathetic. How do you stand yourself? Commissioner Hamburg, I attended your Flat Shoals Park outing a couple of weeks ago. Half the people didn't know what district they lived in, and the other half didn't know who the District 2 Commissioner was. I also asked them, would they want more police officers to provide safety and security for a half a million-dollar concession stand? Now, what do you think 80% of the people said? Thank you for the concession stand, even though they broke into my house and I got carjacked on the way to the park? Curtis Grandison, professional baseball player for the New York Mets, donated $5 million for a Little League baseball field in Chicago. Did you ask Cam Newton of the Panthers or Morgan Burnett of the Packers for a donation for a concession stand? I don't think so. Commissioner Hamburg, your arrogance is exceeded only by the ignorance of the people who vote for you. Commissioner Gregory, you should be the biggest supporter of the police department since you're married to a police officer in Clayton County. I would rather have a three-to-five-minute response time than a half an hour, because the police are short-staffed. You should be the first to advocate for additional funding for the police, to have more officers to keep us safe. I still had more, but I'm going to leave it out. Have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Let me say this, because there's so many people who have showed up in reference to the burn ban. There are some other extenuating situations or circumstances that you might not be aware of, and I want the, uh, Fire Chief to come up here and inform us on, uh, some of the decision that went into, and I do believe that Commissioner Edmondson is the one who proposed the ban, but it was due to these, uh, the situations that, uh, that Fire Chief is gonna speak on. Chief Markson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, kinda what I want to do is just kinda walk you through how the decision, whether or not burning is allowed in the county, is made. We understand that there's a, a state mandated burn ban that takes place between May and October every year. However, once you get outside of that state mandated burn ban, it's left up to each individual municipality to determine whether or not they will allow controlled burning within their jurisdiction. So how Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services handles this responsibility is, that decision is based off of the Chattahoochee District Fire Rating, which is put out every year or every day by the Georgia Forestry Commission. So, right now, simply because of the exceptional drought that most of North Georgia is in, the Forestry Commission, pretty much every day is in what we call either a very high or extreme Class Four or Class Five Fire Danger Rating Day, translated on the news as a red flag warning day. Anytime we see those two categories, we do not allow open burning inside of Clayton County. So even in absence of a permanent ban, which was passed by this board, we still would not be allowing open burning, um, on any day in Clayton County for the foreseeable future, simply until these drought conditions, um, subside or we start to get some enhanced rain. Um, an example of that is we're currently working a two and a half acre woods fire as we speak, um, which is endangering several mobile homes and a couple businesses. Um, that makes number eighty-five in the last thirty-one days, um, that we've responded to, so, and several of those have caused substantial damage to fences, outbuildings and other properties. So the fire danger is real. Um, it doesn't take very much to get them started and they can get away very quick. So while we certainly understand and sympathize with the concerns of the citizens, we're taking at this and we're looking at it from, um, from a community standpoint and a safety standpoint. So, um, I realize the ban is there, but even in absent of it, burning still wouldn't be allowed, um, and we would be enforcing those, those, those penalties under the ordinance on a daily basis.
Ms. Matos, I think is one who asked a question about any other counties or cities that are under the burn ban. She thinks we're the only one, I believe she said.
Yes, sir, no, sir. So the city of Atlanta has a total burn ban as well as does the Cab County. Um, I was just notified by, by our Fire Marshal that, uh, Fayette County implemented a total burn ban today as well. Um, so it's, it's something that if communities don't already have it, they're looking at it, um, and, and they're seeing what they need to do for their respective communities. Um, so we are not the only one to do this and, you know, we, that was research that was done and provided to, um, Commissioner Edmondson ahead of the Town Hall.
Now, we're not gonna take any questions, but I will say, the chief, the Fire Chief will, uh, make himself available to you and if y'all would like to speak to him, uh, in the back, then you can feel free to do so. And he will also be able to relay any additional questions that you might have for this board.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir, sir, we're not taking any questions right now.
This is a question. Yes, it is.
Please get with the Fire Chief. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
Okay. This concludes public comment. The Board will now present a proclamation. Clayton County observes November two thousand sixteen as complex regional pain syndrome, known as CRPS Awareness Month, as presented by Chairman Turner. With those that are present to receive the proclamation, please come forward as the commissioners step down to join you for the presentation.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County observes November two thousand sixteen as complex regional pain syndrome, CRPS Awareness Month. Whereas, complex regional pain syndrome, CRPS, also known as reflex sympathetic dystrophy, RSD, is a nerve disorder that causes chronic pain. And whereas, the symptoms of CRPS are often described as burning that is out of proportion to the severity of the initial injury and can include swelling and extreme sensitivity to the touch. And whereas, while CRPS was first identified during the Civil War, it remains a poorly understood condition with no cure. And whereas, the National Institute of Neurological Disorders and Stroke and other institutes of the National Institutes of Health are conducting ongoing research relating to CRPS. And whereas, members of the CRPS community observe the month of November to help share knowledge and awareness about complex regional pain syndrome. And whereas, on November seventh, two thousand sixteen, members of the CRPS, RSD, community will celebrate the second annual Color the World Orange Day to raise awareness about this poorly understood pain disorder. Now, therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November two thousand sixteen as Complex Regional Pain Syndrome Awareness Month in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to recognize the contributions of the professional medical community, patients and family members who are working to educate our community about CRPS. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and calls the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this first day of November in the year two thousand sixteen. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
The Board will now consider requests of Interim Director of Central Services, Carol Rogers.
Please take them together, Ms. Rogers, unless someone wants a single one out. Here and now, please proceed.
Good evening. I have nine items to present tonight from Central Services. The first one is Recommendation for Renewal of Annual Contract, RFP thirteen dash forty-five, Record Services for Clayton County. This is an annual contract amendment. The recommendation is to renew the multi-award contract with New Image Towing and Recovery located in Forest Park, Georgia, and Terra Wreck and Inc. located in Jonesboro, Georgia. The renewal period is from December the first, two thousand sixteen, through November the thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. There are no remaining renewals on this contract. The Board of Commissioners approved the award on November the fifth, two thousand thirteen. The Department of Vendor Renewal Acceptance and the amendments to the agreements for the above referenced project has been attached for your review and information. Next item is Recommendation for Renewal of Annual Contract, RFP thirteen dash forty-eight, Asset Management Team Neighborhood Stabilization Program, Third Amendment. The recommendation is to renew the multi, the multi-award contract with National Property Institute, LLC, located in Ellenwood, Georgia, and Southern Queston Habitat for Humanity, located in Jonesboro, Georgia. The renewal period is from December the first, two thousand sixteen, through November the thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. There are no remaining renewals on this contract. The Board of Commissioners approved the award on November the fifth, two thousand thirteen. The Department of Vendor Renewal Acceptance and the amendments to the agreements for the above referenced project has been attached for your review and information. Recommendation for Renewal of Annual Contract, RFP thirteen dash forty-nine, which is Real Estate Attorney Services Neighborhood Stabilization Program, Third Amendment. The recommendation is to renew the multi-award contract with Brockstein and Bentley, PC, located in Stockbridge, Georgia, and William A. Miller, PC, located in College Park, Georgia. The renewal period is from December the first, two thousand sixteen, through November the thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. There are no remaining renewals on, on this contract. The Board of Commissioners approved the award on November the fifth, two thousand thirteen. The Department of Vendor Renewal Acceptance and the amendments to the agreements for the above referenced project has been attached for your review and information. Request to rescind multi-award contract, RFB sixteen dash forty-three, which is Public Safety Uniforms and Accessories for Clayton County, Georgia, annual contract. The recommendation is to rescind the contract awarded to Smyrna Police Distributors for RFP sixteen, I'm sorry, RFB sixteen dash forty-three, which is Public Safety Uniforms and Accessories for Clayton County, Georgia, annual contract. The vendor is not meeting the terms of the contract. The award was approved by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners on August the sixteenth, two thousand sixteen. The Department Recommendation to Rescind the Contract Award and the Vendor's Second Clarification Form are attached for your review and information. Next item is a request for con, First Contract Amendment, RFB sixteen dash forty-three, which is Public Safety Uniforms and Accessories for Clayton County, Georgia. This is an annual contract. The request is to amend the multi-award contract due to not meeting the terms of the contract from one vendor. The Board of Commissioners approved this award on August the sixteenth, two thousand sixteen. Um, the request to, is to award the contract items to TNT Uniforms South, Inc., located in Jonesboro, Georgia. We have, we have listed out the items for you on the memo. The amendment to the agreements for the above referenced projects have been attached for your review and information. Next item is the Recommendation for the Renewal of Annual Contract, two zero one five twenty-three, for Central Services Risk Management, CS Star Software, Annual Contract. The recommendation is to renew the contract with Marsh Clear Sight, LLC, located in Chicago, Illinois. The renewal period is from December the eleventh, two thousand sixteen, through December the tenth, two thousand seventeen. There are three remaining renewals on this contract. The Board of Commissioners approved this award on November the seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. The renewal amendment to the agreement for the above referenced project has been attached for your review and information. Recommendation for Award of RFQ two zero one six dash seventy-two, area and ground ladder testing and inspection for the Clayton County, Georgia. It is an annual contract. The recommendation is to award to the only responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, which is Consolidated Fleet Services, Inc., located in Cersei, Arkansas. Funding is available through the Fire Department, other contract services fund fee, uh, fees fund. The Department Recommendation, bid tabulation summary and agreement are attached for your information and review. Next item is for Recommendation for Award of RFQ two zero six dash seven-seven, Tax Auditing Services for Clayton County, Georgia, annual contract for the tax assessor. The recommendation is for award to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, which is Municipal Audit Professionals, LLC, located in Cock, Cockinsack, Massachusetts. Funding is available through the tax assessors, FYE two zero one seven, General Fund, two thousand seven, General Fund. The quote tabulation summary, Department Recommendation and Agreement are attached for your review and information. Also on that memo, um, when we presented it at the meeting, we had the purchasing code was for, not for annual contract, so we did correct that with, uh, the clerk to reflect that in a minute. And the final item is going to be Recommendation for Purchase of Mobile Fire Vehicle Insurance Coverage. The recommendation for award is to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meet the specifications, as required by the county's insurance broker consultant, which is Epic Insurance Brokers and Consultants. The recommendation is to award to Alliance Group dash AGCS Marine Insurance Company, located in Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of fifty-six thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars for one year. Funding is available through the county's general fund. The bid tabulation summary, Department Recommendation, Consultants Recommendation and Alliances Group proposal are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendations authorized the Chairman has designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the tense of the contracts and to authorize the Chief Financial, Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Okay, is there a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Uh, second, probably moving, seconding questions on any of the items.
I do. RFB sixteen forty-three?
Yes.
These two where we say they have not complied?
Yes.
With the contract. Has the contract been reviewed by legal to see if it's too broad or, um, because I, I think it's two of them. It's one for, um, public safety uniforms for the Fire Department and then there's one for TNT, du, due to not meeting the term of the contract from one vendor. So, um, have we sent it, the contract back to legal to make sure that it's not too broad or of a contract and it's what we're needing?
Uh, no, it didn't go back to legal, but it was very specific about the two things that we needed, which was the online ordering for them and they do, meaning when the Fire Department orders, they have to come offline to do that and then they have to email or fax the document back. The second concern was they were not able to hold the price for the logos. So they were charging us for the shirts as well as for the logos and it should have all been one price.
Okay.
So we asked the vendor to confirm, to make sure before we move forward and that is reflected in the memo from the vendor.
Okay, I said, I saw that. It did, they said they were in compliance, but they were really not in compliance.
Right, because we looked at the big call sheet.
Okay, that's it?
Okay. Right, and it's only one contract, so what we did is we moved it from, uh, we rescinded from Smyrna's distributors and we awarded to TNT Uniforms?
Okay.
Who was already under contract with the other departments.
Got it. That's mine. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Well, it's not a question, but maybe a correction on, um, twenty sixteen, seventeen? I believe that's the twenty seventeen budget, I think you said twenties?
Uh, which item, is that for Commissioner Hamburg?
Number eight.
Number eight, okay. Yes, it should be, and this is for the tax auditing services? Yes, it should be for the FYI two thousand seventeen General Fund, yes.
Okay, I just want to make that correction.
Any other questions or statements? Here and now, those favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The Board will consider requests of Chief Financial Officer, Ramona Bivens.
Please take them together, Ms. Bivens.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. I have four items for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment two dash sixty-three is for the General Fund and the Victim Assistance Fund, to amend the budget in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars to provide funds for deficit reserves in the Victim Assistance Fund. Budget Amendment four dash thirty-eight is for two thousand four SPOST, to appropriate funds from two thousand four SPOST fund balance to carry forward fiscal year two thousand sixteen SPOST project budgets and set up budgets for fiscal year two thousand seventeen in the amount of forty-two million, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, eighty-eight Budget Amendment four dash thirty-nine is for two thousand nine SPOST, to appropriate funds from the two thousand nine SPOST fund balance to carry forward fiscal year two thousand sixteen SPOST project budgets and set up budgets for fiscal year two thousand seventeen in the amount of thirty-eight million, five hundred three thousand dollars. And the last item is Budget Amendment four dash forty for two thousand fifteen SPOST, to appropriate funds from the two thousand fifteen SPOST fund balance to carry forward fiscal year two thousand sixteen SPOST project budgets and set up budgets for fiscal year two thousand seventeen in the amount of twenty-nine million, six hundred sixty-one thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Okay, is there a motion? I'll make the motions, there a second.
I'll second it.
Probably moving and seconding questions on any of the items.
Just one. Uh, Ms. Bivens, on the first document, two dash sixty-three, deficiency in the Victims' Assistance Fund, why is that?
We are, the revenue, um, the expenditures exceeded their revenues this year and we depleted the little fund balance that they had and it was still twenty-two thousand dollars short. We have a meeting scheduled with the two departments to discuss the decline in revenue and what we need to do to, um, deal with that moving forward.
Okay, so the budget that we just passed, does it anticipate the loss of revenue?
It does not and that's why we need to talk to them about that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shalonda Miller, Senior Staff Attorney.
Ms. Miller, take them together.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have two items, one from the Staff Attorney's Office, Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash one seven two, to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Chapter fifty, Article one, Section fifty dash two, Board of Health Regulations, to delete subsection B and replace it in its entirety. This is an amendment to comply with, uh, state law amendment to OCGA thirty-one dash three dash five. It amends certain sections of the code with regard to, uh, the statewide regulations in the areas of onsite sewage management systems, portable sanitation rules and regulations, food service rules and regulation, and tourist accommodation rules and regulations, as well as updates the fee schedule. The second item is a request from the- The second item is a request from the Sheriff's Office for the acceptance of a donated vehicle. It is a Ford F-five-fifty truck from Helicopter Express Incorporated, to be used in operations of the Sheriff's Office. The vehicle has been inspected and recommended for service by Fleet Maintenance.
The compensatory time management, item number ten.
Okay. Number ten is a request to adopt the compensatory time management policy that was presented uh, last meeting by the Human Resources Department for non-exempt employees, and this is to comply with the Department of Labor changes to the law that will go into effect on December first, two thousand and sixteen, and it is to set the guidelines and policy for the use and accumulation of compensatory time.
All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving, a second and questions.
I do. Um, just one question, Ms. Amblis. For the um, compensatory time management, are you gonna develop a, you know, any type form, or is there gonna be any type form to be used as far as recording proper time that would be for everybody to use?
Ms. Amblis, if you could, please come to the microphone.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, yes, ma'am, Commissioner Gregory, within the compensatory time management policy, uh, we do take into account of a, we have a procedure embedded within the policy where the department will be submitting monthly reports to Human Resources, so that we can ensure that we are tracking of the hours, so that we can be sure that we're in compliance with the new overtime regulation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Uh, Members of the Board, we need an executive session for real estate and litigation, please.
Yes, and personnel as well.
And personnel.
All right, motion goes into executive session.
So moved. Second.
Probably moving, a second. Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Have a good evening, everyone.